This work session, City Council, October 8th, 2024, for order. I want to welcome everyone here who's in person and also goes online. And I see that our other council member, Neil Ipsen, is on Zoom with us. Neil, you good? Okay. These work sessions are an opportunity for the council receiving information. And also for us to discuss issues that are affecting the city. We do not vote during these work sessions, nor do we take anything upstairs to our regular meeting. What we're going to do is go through the employee high recognition presentations. And then after council has an opportunity to discuss, I hope we're up to public comment. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to your Scott or JJ. To the Capitol program director.
JJ, go.
Rob?
We're all excited to have Rob and he is on board. No one as excited as I am. Rob was our new head of projects director. He started with the classroom team after a several months long hiring process. Included assistant partner panel, a final panel interview with the senior community of your city. He's hit the ground running. He's already been out on the job sites, he's taken pictures of asking questions that I don't have the answer to, so I have to refer him back to the engineers of the works director. But he brings a lot of experience in property management.
Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the city. And I look forward to great things happening and a long term relationship. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Community Development Department, our priest. This is my neighbor.
Yes, this is my neighbor. This is my area. My kids are happy. He's a newly promoted inspector. And actually, he did this in New England for a long time. And he built his own house here, so he really well qualifies to be working down. Yeah, I went to work for the city of Beaufort. Think I can bring a lot to the table and really work with people of Beaufort. Having a nice safe home to live in and just helping the community.
Thank you. My husband, yeah. Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, next, the police department, our team Bryce.
Good evening. We have quite a few new folks on board, as you can tell. We have Denzel Jackson here. He is former Marine Corps and he's joining us as a police officer. Ryan Panavino, also former Marine Corps, joining us as a new police officer. We have John Nagowich. He has vast former experience as a law enforcement officer. So we're so glad to have him on board. Welcome him. I'd have to know too. And then we have Chaplain Steven Bell. I'm pleased to tell you that we started our new chaplain program. He is our head chaplain, our first chaplain. We look forward to joining our, building our core up and so glad to have him on.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next is a presentation on the Department of Public Information, some of the evaluation. Your skipper.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members and all of us here at the city. I'm just going to do a quick little presentation about the PPI program. We started this back in 2018. And being requires us to give you a little update every so often, just to let you know that we're making progress and the programs are moving forward. We do receive credit for this, the PPI program, and it's a pretty good one. So we really want to focus heavily on. We go through this process every year to reevaluate our program and make sure we're producing a good product here. We had our typical meeting back in, I think it was May of this year. Our committee members are me, Annie, Marty K, Kathleen, and Libby Anderson. So our good year and safety update. And we're also looking for a replacement member, so somebody in this meeting is would be willing to serve. We'd be glad to have them. The PPI committee always, our typical agendas, review our notes from last year, discuss any items of accomplishment, how could we do better? How we can improve? And then discuss a plan for coming to 2020, well, it'll be 2025 coming up. At the tail end of the bar, the data provided is it shows a calendar of events that we pretty much have to accomplish throughout the year. And that shows flyers that we post in several places. Meetings that we have to attend and then provide information now to the general public. It's a lot of kind of virtual, but and it's better your timelines if you want to bog you down too much there. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. With the tail end of the literature is our cataloging calendar. It talks about what we have three to live in. Time zones and stuff. And then also some sample flyers that we post throughout the city, just to make sure that people are aware of that flood insurance.
I see we are going to buy annual meetings instead of yearly meetings.
Yeah, we felt like we'd get a better product because we're doing it twice a year versus just once a year. And then that way, because you know our schedules, you know, if we get off a little bit, we're still making our goal two years, two meetings.
Your question?
I had a question on OP number six where it says, hold an annual hurricane fair with local home improvement stores to provide information from the flood protection brochure and additional education on hurricane preparedness and property protection. So I thought that was an excellent identified objective. And then it looked like there was a fair and that did not happen. But you had a booth at the touch and truck event. So I was wondering why the transition from a fair to the touch truck event? And if it was your objective to maybe have a fair in the future?
We would love to, but we usually were a participant of it. We didn't really were the ones organized. It's usually somebody else organized and we're a supplement too. And so we couldn't find a, like Blues would usually have one and they haven't had it in in a couple of years here. So as part of it, we felt like the touch truck would be a good good supplement, may not be as good as the replacement of. But we would follow means jump all over if we had have that event.
So it'd be a matter of either finding somebody to organize it or organize it yourself opposed to waiting on somebody else to.
Yeah.
Would it be nice to have it at the water fester?
Yeah, come on, be a good idea. Something else like that.
Get a lot of people.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Do insurance companies automatically know that we in this area, this been this PPI program? Then we could get the discount to spend it here. Well, the way we get our discount is through the CRS program. And every five years we get audited and that as part of that audit is where we get our discount. And that participation in these programs, it accumulates points. And as that points rise, then the more discount we get.
And so when you say discount, you bring to the individual insurance officer?
Yes.
Or if you're purchasing insurance?
Yes. Such as, as people in a flood hazard zone get a higher rate than the ones that are not in the flood hazard zone.
I'm not sure I asked the question correctly, but.
So if I'm in a flood zone, then we have this PPI program.
Yes.
Do I automatically get the discount or is that something I have to tell the insurance company?
No, it's calculated. Then it's all part of the CRS program. That's just one element of the CRS program. And the CRS program is rated like we're six. And so that's how they note that says that. So that's why, I guess.
You have a question? After Bruce?
Okay.
Yeah, next we have Safe Living Beaufort Initiative. Safe Living Beaufort Initiative in place.
Welcome again, Mary Councilor. So it has been a year since our Safe Living Beaufort initiative started. And just as a reminder, we'll go through inception for you next slide. So in June 2023, heard me say this before, but just a refresher, there was shots fired. We were seemingly having a lot of shots fired calls. And the question was, are we truly having a lot of shots fired compared to normal? Do we have an issue here? Or is this anomaly? Is it normal? We had no idea. So we conducted a metadata analysis from various sources. And we discovered that a lot of our shots fired incidents were happening in apartment complexes, essentially. Some multifamily housing for apartments. So we decided to concentrate our efforts on that. We really wanted to engage our community, create a safer place for our families to live and use to thrive. And we also wanted to instruct our officers on what to do, how to do, and really get some proactive policing going. So they can start sort of the community and get to know the members that live there and work with the apartment complex. We had several goals that were really simple and those goals were.
Well, one of the things when we looked at this, we wanted to set attainable goals. So we can measure what has occurred in the complex and where we move forward and are we making a difference in it? Up to this point, we have always seen crime rise, go in there, show presence in the area and then exit. And then once the crime is low and we're back out of the apartment complex, crime goes back up. So we set attainable goals to watch out for and to measure our success. And one thing we want to look at was we wanted to increase lease in the apartment complex immediately. All right, we wanted to get in there, show presence and show it throughout a time period. We wanted to reduce crime in that apartment complex by 10% within six months. And we wanted to reduce citizen reported crimes by 10% within six months. Obviously, we go in and we're hunting for stuff, want to find stuff and there's going to be those kinds of reporting. But we wanted to address the problems that the citizens have inside these apartment complexes.
Go ahead, Mike, please. Our first apartment complex was Spanish Trace Apartments. This had been a historic area where they had a lot of crime and a lot of problems. There's 88 units there and that is where we decided to start. One of the things that we did that I really loved is we put in one of our first sergeants in charge of this. We put them through specific training through for multi housing complexes. And to make sure that they understood how it went between the management, the residents that live there, and then the services that the citizens offer or that the police department offers the citizen. So in our analysis, you'll see it says March to August 2022. That was our six months before we began the project. So it's an average, monthly average. As you can see, by month, we had in one month, we normally had 46 calls per service, five shots fired, 15 assault calls, three drug offenses, one larceny and four weapons offenses. That was our average. As of August of 24, you can see the numbers and how we've had to decrease there.
One of the things you should take, take on notice too, is when we first started this, we had an average 165 just officer initiated calls within this complex. This is where officers go in, they're going exit patrols, they're going foot patrols, they're making contact with the citizens. Once we started this, you can see an increase of 125% where officers are in there 372 times within the month. I credit this to the officers now taking ownership of a particular complex. They take ownership, they they're watching the crime statistics. Instead of just responding to the entire city, somebody has ownership of this one. But the first sergeant still keeps an eye on the rest of the city as well, so.
One of the things that we really like to do when you go in there is have a community event. And in this particular apartment complex, how long had it been since they'd had a community event before this started and became successful? Was it two years?
Something like that, yes.
It was two years. The first time this year, they were able to have all the kids out in the complex. You know, they had bouncy houses, they had water slides. And we really got together with the community and we had a barbie here with them and really sat down and talked. And they talked about how the atmosphere of the whole complex had changed.
Way the first sergeants had rolled this out was we went down as command staff, the patrol officers, and we put notices out to the community and the citizens. We got them all together. We, there was going to be an increased police presence within their complex. We wanted to let them know why. Then we followed that up with the community events and letting them know that police officers are not bad people. We're there for them. We wanted to be approachable. One of the things with this Safe Living Beaufort is it's more of a team concept between the officers, the property manager and the citizens. What we have seen within these complexes is once we go into these apartment complexes, they see us, they know us. They're not afraid to let us know. They feel comfortable calling us and telling us information. Those are the things that really help us solve crimes and deters crime within their complexes.
Because we're there so often, they really don't have to call anymore. They reach a little bit and we're rolling through there, so they usually stop us, tell us. What we realized with the success of this was that we were really creating a flexible framework. We changed our operation every month according to what was going on within that apartment complex. And what we knew was we needed to use this as a framework for our next apartment complex. So a few months later, next slide, please. We had Cross Creek Apartments that has 144 units. You can see the May to October one month average and you can see August of 24. I will tell you, not all those numbers are zeros. Crime is going to happen. We're more responsive and we're better equipped to respond to the crime when it does happen. And we know who to talk to now and they know who to talk to with us. You can see the crime there and the significant decreases we've had in there as well.
Even with the increased shots fired, you could see that we was in that complex 585% more. And that's saying a lot. Our first sergeants had to do a tremendous job of balancing Safe Living Beaufort and all the apartment complexes and still watching the rest of the city. So they, you know, we're doing a great job in Safe Living Beaufort and all the apartment complexes, but we're still continuing to monitor the rest of the state. I cannot stress that, making that rest of the city would be anybody.
Absolutely, isn't it? What this lets them do, it really provides a strategy for their day. They know exactly what they have to do. We know our specialized units go there too. They know exactly where the crime happened, when it happened, who to contact, what to prevent. So a few months later, we had Mossy Oaks Village on board and that's 96 units. Their average for the six months is on the left and their current as of August 24, that is, is on the right. Every single month, we do another analysis and we roll out new numbers. So if you ever want to know where we're at with a certain complex, we can give that to you whenever you would like.
Part of the ownership is the first sergeants are actually running these numbers and turning them into me monthly. And then we put them all together in our complete comparison amongst every month. One of the things you'll see that each one of these apartment complexes, not all started at once. What we do is we move in, we get established and then we, once we feel we've established and safely move on to the next complex. We also look at manpower and do we have enough people to move throughout these complexes? Each person will stay attached to their complex. So and we've been started with our first sergeants and the next will move to our sergeants as we move through.
As we get more complexes on board. It really teaches leadership, team building. The first sergeants are the ones that come up with these activities and they present it as their team project for each one of their projects. Go ahead, sir. So since Spanish Trace was the first, this is the year average since we've been doing this. Officer initiated calls have went up 177%. Weapons offenses have been down 30. Major crimes are down 93%. Shots fired are down 47%, assaults 92%, drug offenses 29% and larceny 71%. That's for all the complexes up to date, year to date.
What does make your crimes consistent?
That's going to be like your murder, rape, your part one crimes essentially, robbery, robbery, assault. Next slide, please, to our future implementation.
All right, we've already started this. Our first sergeant has moved into this complex Wilderness Cove. What we also try to do as we move to the next complex, we try to determine which apartment complex needs attention soon. So the next one we looked at was Wilderness Cove. We had started that complex. We went down and had our community meeting with them. And we also had a community event with them where we go out and cook hot dogs and hamburgers and just mingle with the community and they get to see our faces and knows.
It usually involves playing games too with the kids. We do a lot of stuff for the kids. There are a lot of kids in these complexes and really our whole goal is to provide a safe environment for them here as their home. Our next implementation is smart technology that we're rolling out. And not news to any of you, but that's starting to roll out right now, so. That is it for the Safe Living Beaufort. We will continue to make this framework. Do you have questions?
You can do examples.
Smart technology would be our license plate. That is our smart technology. Also, our officers now have smartphones, all of them, so they can get the information more quickly. And they can also look on their phones to see, oh, if you send a picture of someone you're looking for, a car you're looking for, and things like that. Or text messaging, they never had those capabilities.
And they're also going to be called car crime analysis of residential area called CAR. And it feeds that up straight to the patrol officers. It's we're looking at implementing this, so they don't tell the officers at this time, there's a peak in these areas of this type of crimes. So the officers know to focus their patrol efforts in certain areas and that's across the city.
One of the things from this project that we learned, our crime analysis somewhat was cumbersome. It was not easy to do. The officers did not know how to do it. So we applied for and received a grant through the Bureau of Justice Administration. It's not actually money, but what they do give us is in residence help for crime analysis. And they provide the guidance on tools that we should get. They're free or low cost in most cases. And that also leaves sort of smart technology. That way, crime analysis can be at the touch of any of our officers fingertips, instead of having wait for us days to go through the analysis process.
Yeah, we'll also use, excuse me, family.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question.
Yes.
When you go into a complex, is management eager to work with you from the, in the beginning? Or do you have to convince them?
I would say generally, yes. About 85, 95% of them are very eager to work with us. Where we see kind of a lag and we determine what we can actually do is when they're owned by a large corporation and you don't get a lot of support from the large corporation, that has never stopped us. Because even though the large corporation may not give funds to the management, there's a lot of things that we can do ourselves to kind of help the crime in that area and to really get with the community citizens to let them know we're here for them. It's really about relationship building for us more than anything.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understood something that you said. You said you guys are working to know who to talk to in these apartment complexes. So I know that community policing and establishing those relationships are a good thing, especially when you're trying to get information that maybe they don't feel comfortable providing. But there's also a lot of value in identifying the individual leaders in those apartment complexes or in those communities, getting them to trust you and then communicating through them because their constituents may just feel more naturally inclined to discuss something with them opposed to a police officer. But when you said that, is that what you had meant? You guys were looking to identify who the leaders were in these communities and establish relationships with them?
Absolutely. When we go to our, we have more than one community meeting there. And last time we went to one, I'll say Mossy Oaks, the lady said, when you all first came in here, I wasn't even going to talk to you. Now I talk to you all the time, kids running up to the cars and everything, see what police officers.
What we also see is family members of people that live within these complexes. We actually sat down with someone yesterday. Their niece lived in one of the complexes and she came in and talked to us. She's a community leader and wanted to talk to us. And she gave us some information and she's been sending me information on our recent shooting that kind of helps us. But I also encouraged her, hey, talk to your niece and, you know, tell her it's okay to talk to us. So we're dealing with her to deal with the niece that might not feel exactly comfortable yet coming and talking to us.
And your full report is here. Do you have any other questions? I know you all included.
Yeah. This is very minute, but I was looking at one of these in Spanish Trace. And I noticed that the month of July was not on there. And I do think that we had a incident in July for Spanish Trace. Yeah, so it's like it just missed from June to August. But anyway, so aside from the implementation of new neighborhoods or complexes as that becomes available and the implementation of smart technology, are there any other current needs that you guys have identified that would allow you to expand on this program we're working on?
So we've mentioned before, some crime analysis, crime analysis capability. And we hope to get a real time crime center up and running at least part time. And so we've been exploring those types of options, yes, sir.
Okay, and those identified needs would support this initiative?
Absolutely. Sure.
Obviously, we've gotten a number of cameras placed throughout the city. And we've actually been, we sat, actually sat down this morning and sat with the county so we can kind of integrate our different camera systems. But the more cameras throughout the city we have, the better and easier it is for us to track criminal activity and then identify people that flee from scenes and stuff like that. Obviously, there's always a need for gunshot technology and stuff like that that I see in larger cities. Those are all extremely expensive, so we kind of weigh the value.
There's cameras that pick up on that stuff, right? And basically it picks up on sound and.
For like additions onto the camera.
Yeah, it'll hit it to the, to the shot fired, right, okay. But that's all incredibly expensive and obviously something that.
Yes.
Anybody else? Council? Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you.
We say, what is on the agenda is a presentation on city owned properties with common investment. Alan Posman.
Mary, I just want to, this is, this is part one of a very extended. The finance was being innovated lately, but not only internal audit, they were trying to get through. But also it's like the extra additional work was implemented. It was trying to figure out our apartment funding. They've been test saturated. My recommendation, see how council feels about it, is to maybe have a special work session in the library. And devote that solely to examining some return on investment numbers for these properties. This is, this is basically an identification of the properties and what our initial commitment to that was. We're meeting November 12th, is it, Tracy? We're meeting November twelfth, is it, Tuesday?
Yes.
Also, we can hopefully meet the nineteenth, which could be the third, Tuesday in November, if that's acceptable. We'll add that.
Okay.
As a special work session devoted to, to this issue.
Yeah, because I wanted this to be addressed before we have our, our retreat, our first part of the year.
Give you more, more complete data on each property, and, uh, that, that can, we can discuss that a little bit, marry it on it. We address it again, actually, to plan.
Okay.
Sounds good, Steve, briefcase, because I was a little confused on the return on investment part. I was like, well, this is identifying the properties that we own, but I don't see any return on investment.
Should have, no, that's part one.
Right. That makes a lot of sense, aight.
Yeah, I said the same thing, I got the data here, actually. For, take ones, kind of high level, these kind of pushing things together, this is kind of starting with the discussion.
Well, Alan, do you want to go through and just show?
Yeah, we'll now see what we have. Okay, we're good. Yeah, now we got, all right, yeah, so we mentioned during the strategic plan back in February, the discussion item about city-owned properties, their potential impact. This presentation right now is focused, I'm sort of, then find those properties and have some more high-level major information. We're beginning with Popper and Carter Street. This was a lease purchase agreement for total over one point two million dollars. Currently managed space from January twenty, uh, January twenty sixteen to January twenty eighteen. This property office offers office space for Buford Federal Corridor, Park Buford, and downtown operations along with other tenants we have.
Can you go back that one second?
Yeah.
Are we going to include any parking fees that come in for the piece of the parking lot as part of that property?
Yeah, we can, okay. Or, well, for that. Eleven Hundred Boundary Street, uh, Boys and Girls Club, uh, city purchase building, uh, for two point three million dollars.
If any question you just asked. Uh, the parking fees for the digital corridor, private, kind of, streets separated out from the parking piece for a place else in the city, or is this part of the general car, parking piece of the city?
Probably for all generals, we can, I mean, house, or, or different, kind of isolated it out just for the.
So from a profit perspective, the parking fees would, and the cost of the building, Chris, could be carried on the building is not really clean.
But if you think the property is a whole, yeah, it's a whole, revenue we receive from funding, uh, that really should be factored into the return on the investment of the, of the property itself, so. There, there are a few sources of income on this property. One is, is parking, or the other are leases that we currently have in terms.
The parking on that property is not restricted to, both to use that building.
No, it's public.
I guess I was concerned about, how do you, how do you separate them out, to know, sure, what's, what's included is to the building.
We, yes, we do, yeah. You do lease some parking spaces to the, to the business.
It is not. I'm sure you purchased for two point three million dollars in the separation warrant. We start to UCB, sorry, security program, and the South to the cyber center. Okay. A little more detail. We have the Carnegie Building. I'm pleased to the greater Buford Royal Convention, Bakersbury Bureau, Charlie Lake. The Arsenal, the history museum, also Buford Bakersbury Center. Some of these, we did have, remember, during the budget process, we have some capital projects tied to these, uh, these properties as well, so we're kind of treating that in to, in our analysis of our return on investment. Buford Commerce Bar, uh, they purchased two hundred and nine acres, have one point eight million dollars back in May of twenty twenty twelve. We purchased additional twenty acres, fourteen were purchased, fourteen were donated, for about four hundred seventeen thousand in September twenty nineteen. So, I got my, my sort of work with Buford, I don't know about my corporation, uh, a little more information on some of these, uh, properties within this complex as well. Just make sure we have the latest information. As the manager mentioned, this was just kind of just, uh, highlight the properties. If there's any additional properties that account, we'd like for us to, uh, look at and buy analysis for, by that, if we're meeting. And, uh, yeah, we'll have more kind of in-depth, uh, analysis. This is kind of just a high-level kind of a first, you know, discussion, probably.
Can I, can I, what would prevent us from just going ahead and looking at all of our properties?
Well, that, that's a basic question. Do, do you want to look at City Hall, Lee Station, or, you know, some court? If you do, we can roll those in.
I would, I would think so, yeah. I would think we, I would like to look at all of them. Nothing else, just from informational standpoint, but.
Then there's another, we also need to throw around, uh, the city on the south tower. So I think we need to throw that into the presentation as well.
I don't think City Hall needs to be added into it.
Yeah, well, I, I, it, it, I, I think they should be separated out. I'd like to know both, but I think the ones that are, they are primarily for private. I mean, we're going to have City Hall, you know, it's, it's a, it's a part of a necessity, a necessity, if you will. Whereas, um, you know, there's been a conversation about what happens at Commerce Park, right? Should we have, should we not have? That kind of thing, so I'd like to see them separated out, but I'd like to see maybe the cost of everything.
To the other assets, um, I went online to GIS to see if there's a listing of all city properties. They show you a map, but I, I don't know what they are. You have to kind of guess what they are. Be nice to have a listing of all those properties.
Yeah.
To Josh, if that, where you can identify all city-owned property.
That was something that Justin Giordani, our GIS analyst through InterDev that recently left, was in the process of working on. I'm actually meeting with the, uh, IT team this week, or the GIS team at InterDev again this week.
Jay, Jay, can you speak up, please? We can't hear you, I can't.
The GIS analyst left, uh, InterDev, the company we contract with, last week that was working on all of this. We are currently working with the, uh, InterDev team to get that replacement. A meeting with them this week to work through all of the outstanding work that's being done. Uh, so that will be update, updated as we, as we continue to work through that. There's quite a few, uh, mapping features and informational features that we're still working through. That'll be available to the public and internally as we move forward.
Yeah, we can get that, because that way we could identify maybe some other properties. Right, that, that, you know, through the annual property tax, um, and through Buford County, we have a list of properties that we pay property taxes on. Hopefully just as to our fee personally, but we can kind of use that as well, part of our database. I think that might help out as well, we might, the GIS portion, then kind of look at later, please, and find those properties.
Should I include vacant properties, if we have any?
Yeah, we've baked in a lot of, so there's a lot of money, and that's what we have as well.
I think we have over ninety, right? Yeah, we have a lot.
Break it out between, they kind of, city, kind of, properties and other properties as well.
Is, is there looking at any debt service that might have on any of these assets as well, I can add over there?
Yeah.
Who that analysis?
Well, please.
See, we'll write that back to you in a special session on the afternoon.
Okay, great.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Before we move on, any comments? Got one, okay, bring one.
Hi, Graham Trask, twelve eleven Bay Street. Um, I mean, as a citizen, and, and I've been, uh, challenging the city to do this analysis, I'm a little surprised at where, at the lack of progress to date. I was under the impression that this was going to be done this month. That's one comment. Second comment is, um, I think it probably merits a discussion about how you're going to do the analysis. Um, there are a lot of ideas that are being thrown out here, and I would argue that the arsenal is a different kettle of fish than the Commerce Park. I would find it surprising if the city's going to sell the arsenal. So, I was just wondering why that might have been included in there, uh, Alan?
Yeah, it's not, it's city-owned property, or some capital needs associated with that as well. As you mentioned, we're not, I think we'll be selling that property anytime soon, but want to kind of include everything.
Okay. Anyway, I think it would be helpful to get some sort of outline on how you're going to do the analysis. And then, second of all, perhaps prioritize some of the high-value, uh, assets, many of which you included here. But I think there's some other ones too, the, uh, the coffee shop property out on Boundary Street. People have mentioned the Stump Man, the recent acquisition of the Stump Man Lot, as potential priority assets. And then, of course, um, I agree that it would be good to go through all of them, but perhaps as a second order analysis, once you go through the priority projects, because if you go through all of them, it's going to be a hell of a project, all at once. Thank you.
Anyone else? Joe Mack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Could, could you come up here and give us your name and address?
Right beside you.
Follow the camera, continue.
Uh, didn't even, Joe Mack, uh, city resident. I just had a comment about, um, eleven hundred Boundary, this, the, uh, cyber center. So, the, um, uh, that's the old Yankee Restaurant, so, um, uh, I remember riding my bike, I think it was last year, or give or take, uh, private schools would either play basketball or volleyball, I don't know what sport, but they would access the building from the back door. And, you know, if you, nothing against you Mitch, and thank you for all your effort with the Green Street Gym. Now you go contrast that with the Green Street Gym. If there's some back doors, you know, they would chain it with some steel rope and double lock those doors. They might do that, maybe not, but I'm just talking about access. And, uh, I know the college kids, uh, were able to use the cyber center for basketball, and probably continue to, to do that. The county still owns the Green Street Gym. And, you know, basketball is my favorite sport. I, as far as playing, well, maybe biking first, but I hardly ever played basketball except in my driveway when I was a kid, but if there's some way, I don't know if you control the cyber center, because maybe the college has control, or the cyber center, which is maybe, I don't, I'm not sure if it's independent from the, the, um, the college. But the doors in the Green Street Gym, you know, they're, they're similar in a way, the two buildings, the cyber center and the Green Street Gym, where you, you go into front door, you gotta go through two or three doors just to get to the gym. And the Green Street Gym had some doors, they look like, you know, an emergency room doors where they, they seal shut electronically. And then, like a correctional facility almost, but it, it, it just, I'm just wondering, but I'm not comfortable using a county facility, anything to do with county. You know, once, on, once they steal from us, steal buildings twenty, twenty-five times, you know, the, oh, now they're twenty-six times, you're not going to steal the building, it was, nothing against you Mitch, uh, you know, and thank God for Mitch, because it, it would have been a complete failure up to now, but Mitch and all, all the help lessened that. So I don't, I don't know, and I'm not saying that there's a solution, but I'm just saying, and as far as the recreation, I don't see recreation that's reducing crime, but I, I would say it definitely makes people healthier when you exercise. And they have proven that the more trees in the neighborhood, the less crime. And all these apartments going up, you know, we, we don't have, you know, multi-billionaires in Buford. You know, if you look at the Walmart hairs, I'll just listen to the radio today, that they're giving, I, I don't know the exact number, it was, I, I was halfway, something like ten million dollars to, uh, you know, the, the recent storm, Helene. All those people need help. But, the Walmart hairs in Bentonville, Arkansas, they, they bankrolled recreation. I mean, right, left, they put millions in it. But we, we don't have anybody in Buford giving cash. I'm, I'm, well, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly able to volunteer and help, uh, along with other folks. Um, uh, and, you know, I, I, I grew up here, so I, I've seen this over the decades. We, we just, we can, and need more people like Mitch. Um, but with county-owned stuff, I, I mean, I know the city can do a much better job, um, than the county can tell anybody first. But, uh, um, and if, if all these apartments going up, it's not a whole lot of parks, and that's how I only want to think of Shell Point Park and Burke Wells. You got the one, uh, department's right behind Walmart, if there's, you know, where these people play at, if they're just, you know, in the streets, you have to, you have to give them an alternative. If you make it easier, they're going to use the recreation. And, uh, the cyber, the cyber center, I mean, I mean, you know, you could, you know, it is a basketball court. They do multi-use it, you know, golf balls. It's, it's a beautiful place to play indoors when you play basketball. So I, I would just, uh, hope, hope you would, um, think about that, maybe you get an idea from what I just brought up. But I'm, I'm not saying it should be how, you know, it's got to be this way or that way. I'm not, that's not what I'm here telling you, but, uh, I think you got the gist of it, hopefully, and, and the people that, you know, I've been, you know, the people that've been here five minutes, they, they might not understand the recreation out here. But we, we, you know, and there's, y'all have people on the staff that've been here for, for a long, long, long time. So something to consider, thanks a lot.
Anyone else? Okay. The next discussion item, uh, is planning commission update, pardon?
Please.
Benjen, you coming up too?
Yeah, okay, I am. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, so I think the main goal for me here, um, is to just update you guys on our progress on the code edits that we are reviewing. Plan commission members agree that it'll be beneficial for you guys to, um, kind of know, have our schedule and where we are so far. So, uh, who really is here with me, uh, Mike, uh, he's the secretary of the planning commission. Uh, Mike told me, uh, wanting to be here, but he's unfortunately couldn't, you know, attend. Um, so, um, I guess let me just get to it. So, the planning commission decided that we're just going to take the code, uh, edits in section. And so, whenever we get approval, it'll, uh, come to you guys in, uh, just in section, but, well. Um, we've been having work sessions at least once a month, sometimes two. Uh, we had a work session yesterday, I mean, not yesterday, last week. And then we will have another work session next week. And, like, right now, we're on the P chapter seven, chapter nine subdivision, on topic of the code. So, the way, just want to talk about a little bit how we're going about this. In the beginning, it was kind of slow, uh, started with trying to figure out how to review this amount of information and changes. So, what we're doing is we're having work sessions, but we're not taking any, uh, verbal public comments on our work session, but we are taking written comments on our work sessions. But we, we still are having verbal and or written with our meetings, so. So, in the beginning, we were kind of overwhelmed a little bit with, um, the technical, uh, comments, like, uh, grammar, or any, uh, language comments. So, we're trying to put that aside and just, uh, talk about the big. topics in general. So that's going pretty good so far. And we have, we have a schedule that Vice Chair Mike Tony Kirk has put together. So we've gone through chapter nine point seven, nine point ten, the certificate of perpetuity for the historic district's demolitions. And the planning commission has unanimously approved those recommendations. Had a chance to review that yet, but that is what, that is our first package that we're hanging out, like free to review. But the main point on that section is that we see that the HRB is to review all the demolitions, both non-contributing and contributing in the historic district in both the conservation and preservation. And those, and we added, we edited some requirements and we call it the homograph. Went to home and one of the lawyers on the planning commission, like she did a lot of work helping us write this draft. And this draft, a lot of it is based of the city of Columbia's historic demolition part of their code. So it's kind of like our basis, our template. Took that and kind of dated our own. So like I said, we're now on chapter seven and chapter nine regarding the subdivisions. Fortunately, chapter seven last week, and we just got an initial draft today. And then we're going through chapter, chapter nine next week on our work session. And on a previous work session, there were some concerns on the planning commission that we can't necessarily address in the code edits. And it would be more of a city policy and one of those some of the subjects on those is traffic impact analysis, public notices, available utilities, better coordination with the director of sewer authorities. And there's some division requirements and that could be in the code, but the ones that would have to be in the city policies. We had discussions about having an updated GIS map that shows existing and anticipated future density slash traffic conditions in the city. So that the applicant could do proper traffic impact analysis in the broader sense versus just the smaller section of the city. So in addition to that, there are some discussions that it might be beneficial for the city to have their own traffic engineer that can review a great recommendations through the and public notice aside, there is a discussion that we just need larger signs in the areas that are that are going to be reviewed. So we also have contact, contacted the ZDWA and HRB regarding any comments on chapter nine. So that's basically it, if you guys have any questions.
I think you guys covered.
Questions and comments? Okay, so first of all, thank you for the update. It's extremely helpful. And I know that you guys have talked about, maybe surprising, I do watch meetings. And there's been questions in regards to what council would like to see or what we're expecting from the planning commission. And I think these kind of opportunities to communicate give us a better understanding of what each other's vision is, make sure we're aligned, right? So I, I like this and I appreciate the update. One thing is, is I found it pretty interesting when you guys were having the conversation in regards to public comment. I'd like for you to elaborate a little bit more on why you guys decided to have no public comment except for written public comment for the work sessions, because I think that it's been extremely beneficial for us in our work sessions to have public comment after they have the opportunity to hear us discuss it or while we're discussing it. And I know that maybe in some lights, it may look or seem burdensome, but that's, that's the point of transparency and communicating and engaging the public. Not everybody's going to have the opportunity to read the packet beforehand and then write out what they want to say and submit it to the planning commission. And I think you guys are are losing an opportunity to better engage the public by only having written a comment in your work sessions. So elaborate a little bit on how you guys decided that.
So I think the main reason for doing that is to just get this going more efficiently. In the beginning, we said was how the comments were getting so very detailed and very, you know, very word specific that it's almost kind of, it's something that we could have it written and we'll give it to Kurt and Kurt can create as a draft and then we could use.
I don't think you actually made a policy. I think it was resolved, but it has been a lot of three months, or we had a lot of, where people were making a lot of comments, and I think it was just
Yeah, we didn't never got to a policy. Yeah, that's right. And so, but that's kind of, that's kind of what we're doing anyway. I mean, we'll take it if somebody really wanted to make a public comment. But I think, okay, that's a concern. I guess you mentioned that to the planning commission. But it is, it was kind of something that we're just trying to focus on our own conversation with the planning commission. And then taking a public comment, and then when they do come up, we can discuss that in.
I think you guys should consider, I think you should either consider having a public comment upfront or maybe on the back end. But either way, it goes opening it up and giving them the opportunity to speak if they just were sitting there listening, but didn't have time to prepare their comment. And I know, you know, trying to put myself in your position there is, you know, keeping documentation in the minutes. I know that that could be burdensome, but I do think that it has a lot of value. And I wouldn't, wouldn't like to see us shut the committee out by only having them submit written comments in that, in that work session. So I'd like you guys to consider that personally. We'll see where that goes. The demolition ordinance, one thing that I saw that was added that was not in the city of Columbia's, which I personally feel like is a direct conflict with the preservation manual, is the addition to remove economic feasibility from the conversation. I don't think, I think the historic review board needs to and has to consider economic feasibility to some degree. And so removing that I think is a mistake. And I think it's very plain, obviously, a conflict in the preservation manual. And I can tell you the page number that it's on, and it specifically states that that's something that's to be considered. So I don't know why we added that in. Aside from that, I think that it's definitely a good start and I don't know for certain, but my guess is that the historic review board was not part of the conversation. You guys were drafting that ordinance, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, I think there probably would have been value to having them at the, maybe you guys have a joint meeting or something and talk to their board as well. There's a lot of, a lot of information and historical value that they bring to the table. So maybe a joint meeting. And then larger signs, I think that's really good. I would add too, that maybe from our position, we could make sure that we have, even if it's you know, a public information or education that's put on by the city to let people know about the fact that we have notify me features on the website, because maybe we refine that a little bit more to where people can be notified specifically if there's something that's going on in their area. But I don't know that there's a lot of people in our community that are using that notify me feature. And I have found it extremely valuable, and I'm on council just to remain connected, right? There's times where I forget that you guys are having a meeting or somebody else is, but just being able to get that notification sent in a text message is huge. And so I think us pushing that a little bit at the same time that you guys add larger signs would probably be extremely helpful.
One thing, Josh, is there considering, right now with the Brown adding basically a public hearing on sketch plans, preliminary plans, which adds, and site plans, it's pretty much adds the whole development process to a public hearing and with notifications. So that's a management change. Let's see the draft presentation.
Yeah, and in addition to the patient, there was some talk on the last bike commission. It's possible to notify social media.
One last comment, and maybe if people didn't watch the meeting, they won't know where this is coming from, but you will. You guys don't need a referee. You're the referee. You're the referee. So you steer the conversation. That's, that's the chair. So that's the only comments that I have.
What's your schedule on getting, you would try to go through all of this first and then bring it to council as several different code changes? Or are you going to do it periodically? Because I know some of these things have been done and already voted on and have to come before council, you know?
Right, yeah. The first one, the first demolitions that has been voted on by the so that's, I'm not sure what the schedule is, but that's ready to be, you guys. So we'll just go through by sections and you guys can take it by sections or take it as a whole. It's up to you guys.
You had any ideas on what you wanted to do with this?
I really think it's up to you, like, see the schedule. It's easier to do it all at once or parcel out.
I think it's, is they can, they should come back to us and not wait.
Yeah, maybe we could do it just in our regular sessions, work sessions.
I just want to know what you're asking me to do, the ordinance changes and parts coming through rather than making every ordinance change.
Then that's kind of what we're doing, I think, right now, because you guys had it prioritized here, and I was looking at the order in which you have it prioritized, and I would agree with that. Probably the best way to do that. I don't know that, I think if we try to do it all at once, it's too much.
Yes, and that's kind of, you know, that's probably the best idea.
The best thing, the best thing is to do this and be very thorough, and I think you guys are doing a very good job of screening that. And then when it comes, we should be paying attention to what you're doing. This way, we already have, you know, an introduction to what's coming down the pipe. But then when we see it, I think the best way to do it is to prioritize it, which is exactly what we have right here. And then we'll take it in bite size. That's this is.
And if the minister would like, I don't know, how we have to review this, but somebody from the planning commission be there to answer questions or thoughts.
I will.
Be very thorough with you. There's three attorneys, two architects and engineers. Tell me what I
Okay, is that it?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, next on the discussion items.
Sure, I'll do that after we finish this, but go ahead, we'll start now.
Rob Cahill, six oh eight Otter Street. So thank you for your work, Josh. Thank you for opening the door. I was troubled immensely by the comment that there's no oral comments, just written comments. First principles, principle of government is to be effective, not efficient. So when the scales turn to efficiency, it falls on deaf ears to people my age. So by nature, deliberative process is not efficient. It's not the purpose. So we need to get this in because you'll pay for it later, and that's not a risk management choice. So again, I would commend you. I'm glad, Kurt, thank you for saying it's not codified. I think you need, I would encourage you strongly to revisit that and allow comment to be live and in the biologic motion. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. I'm Stephen Murray, resident of six oh nine Craven Street. I retired from public service about a year ago and tried to go quietly into the night, but some political gladiators want to keep dragging me in on social media. So here we are. I appreciate Councilman Scaletti bringing up the abolishment of her voice comment at the planning commission meetings. As you all know, for the past six, seven, eight years, in the strategic plan, this council has made transparency and accessibility a cornerstone of where we're trying to go as a city. As you also know, that as we debate these policy matters, the private sector and residents and developers and all the folks who are engaged in the development process bring a lot to the table. And so squashing that ability for those folks to have real-time interactions with their planning commission, I think, works absolutely counter to the transparency and accessibility goals. And so again, I'm thankful for Councilman Scaletti for being the only council member around the table for speaking up on that behalf. I can appreciate the planning commission's goal of expediency, given that we've been working for over two years to make many of these code investment adjustments, but I'll also argue that you've been working on it for two years. So what's another couple more months if you have a loud public comment? Expedient policy rarely, rarely equals good policy. Thank you.
I'm used to sitting in the corner. I'm very concerned about the provision that says you remove economic consideration as opposed to as you consider what's best for the property owned by some individuals. Implementing that in the fact that it's proposed, like to be discriminating, discriminatory in certain classes of people likely to inhibit the resources necessary to revise some of that, renovate and revitalize some of the properties that need being revitalized. Jonathan Ripka is a historic preservation economist. He came here several years, brought here by the city and HBS, U S C B. Then had a series of private meetings. He said in response to the direct question that each one of those houses that have revitalized and brought back adds forty to fifty thousand dollars to the value of the houses around it. Well, the city council, then you have a distinct interest of their three houses nearby. That's a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty, and that was before COVID, so it's probably bigger now of increased value. And that's the use of infrastructure that we've all paid for, like streets, lights, parks, police stations, fire stations, schools, and a whole library, this whole list of things we've invested. So to try to sneak in some provision that says that we should pretend that what things cost doesn't affect people's decisions is wrong. And then as someone pointed out, it's not in historic preservation manual for a reason. So despite the elegant words that someone put up there, it's just wrong and it's taking someone's property and not asking you to consider that before you implement.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the, the oral comment, I think Benji wanted to clarify that, but they've never made that policy. I think that was a little bit of confusion because they're asking for when people do bring some specific requirements to the planning commission. It was usually the same people that they put them in writing. That would be more helpful. I think that was what it was. They never made a policy for us just after the months. I think that's, I think that was unofficially said, and I don't, I think, I don't, when I avoid the confusion, then certainly no desire to ever shut out a public hearing or public comments.
Yeah, Tim McFann, Secretary of Planning. We certainly appreciate everybody's comments about the public comment, but I do think Kurt's right that there may be some misunderstanding. We absolutely do not squash public comment, especially at our, at our regular meetings. The idea that we, we were having problems because we were having multiple work steps of the line in order to get through one page of proposed code changes. In order to get through one page of proposed code changes and it, it was unmanageable. Um, so we took a lot of steps to try to make it possible to get through, one of them was to set up the schedule, which I think you all have. And um, we did a little subcommittee uh work, um, so we're having all these work sessions, we're having additional meetings of subcommittees. And then we're having our regular meetings and the one thing that we did feel was making our work sessions not productive was. The sheer volume of public comment, much of it not even on what we were talking about that day um at the work session. So we thought we'd try having, um, please give us your comments before the meeting in writing through Kurt. Because many of the comments we're getting were things like typos and language and stuff like that, which, you know, to, to do that. Out loud, in person, talking about it in the work session, we did not think was the best use of our time. We have taken extended amounts of public comment, you know, previously in the work sessions and I think we will be happy to rethink this idea. We can talk about it at the work session we have next week. Um, but it, it wasn't, we, certainly there's been no limit on public comment during our actual meetings and no intention to do that. We are all about transparency as the city leaders have told us, this is what we need to be doing, this is what we want to be doing as a group. But we also want to find a way to get through this very large job and that was something we're trying. So if it's not working out and if it's not consistent with what you all want us to be doing, we can definitely rethink that and maybe come up with some other way to expedite the process. Because we have been working on it since we had our first meeting, I guess, at the beginning of the year and we haven't gotten very far. Uh, we're trying to, you know, make it happen, because I understand it's a priority of, of the leadership and we're just trying to do the best we can. But we'll definitely reconsider the public comment situation.
Well, now, I just want to clarify something too, because I commend the effort to make the meetings more efficient and I know that this is separate because you guys have the work sessions, so this isn't for your regular session. So I understand that and I guess my point is, is in order to keep public comment from just being written, maybe, maybe structure it different in the agenda. So you have a specific time in which the public can do it, because we have work sessions here and the way we've generally done work sessions is people can comment on, on each item. But then for our regular session, we have a time upfront and a time at the back end, but you guys have a seven member body, so you have a lot more people that have ideas and that they want to communicate, so it kind of drags the meeting out sometimes. So maybe organizing your public comment um in your work sessions would be beneficial for you guys, but still allow for the opportunity. Uh, for, for people that maybe aren't prepared or haven't written some or have a new idea, to have that opportunity to express that in the work session so that you guys can have it in your mind whenever you go to your, your regular session. So um, I, I don't, I don't want to, to come off as if I was demeaning, you guys are, are taking away from what you're trying to do, because I do think that the intent is good and it's to be effective. It, it was just concerning to me that we wouldn't have uh the option for public comment, verbal public comment in the work sessions, even if it wasn't codified in a po- a policy. Just for that to be the discussion and the potential direction of the board, when I don't think it, don't think it has to be, even if it's a couple of people. Um, and maybe for the, some of the uh, the grammar corrections, maybe that can be submitted upfront, but there's just so much value in, in, in getting. You know, people's opinion as, as you have in meetings and that's, that's where we benefit from here too, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, we can definitely talk about, um, you know, some way of organizing it a little bit, but, you know, I do want to say that we, we really have. Taken and benefited from a huge amount of public comment already in this process, particularly in the portion of code dealing with historic review um procedures. Um, and, you know, we um. I think hopefully we'll continue to get that kind of citizen participation and feel the benefit from it, so thank you for your suggestion.
Yes, um, I feel like public comment is very important, but you might want to maybe consider a time limit on it, on each comment. Sort of like what, you know, we did the five minute, you could do three minute or whatever y'all choose, but something like that might work.
Graham Trask, twelve eleven Bay Street, um, I, I, I might suggest there's a little politicking going on here about public comment and transparency. Um, just a, as, as an observer, um, one of the things that is really important is to get things across the line. And this group has been working on these code edits for nine months now and I don't believe anything has actually come in front of. The city council unless I'm incorrect, has Kurt, has anything come in front of the city council?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, so um, that to me is, is, is a broken process. And I would challenge both the planning board and city council to actually start processing some of the suggestions. It sounds like the certificate of appropriateness, uh, which also deals with demolition is ready for city council. Um, and that uh, it also provides another opportunity for citizen input, both at the work session and at the city council meeting. So I, I didn't quite, did you guys agree on a process where this was, you're going to actually start processing some of these suggested changes? Is that right?
Instead of waiting for all, we were going to have them as they are, come through the planning council and then we'll get it put on a work session for us.
And then certificate of appropriateness, Kurt is ready to go to the city council is the first one?
I don't think this comes back to us in one thing, this goes to us in a regular session.
Recommendation.
Perfect, thank you.
What else?
I am barely two four one five, okay, the street, um. I would just like to take exception to Mr. Trask's comment about the process being broken. I have been in these meetings from the very beginning and this was a completely new commission who had to find their way and find their process and find their job. And create a system and a, and a way to move forward, I think they've done an excellent job. Thank you.
What else?
Uh, I'm sorry, I think you misunderstood me, I, I think the, the planning commission has done a fantastic job. Um, so uh, I, I, you must have misinterpreted what I said, what I think is broken and needs to be improved is that. The recommendations need to make their way now to city council. And since none have actually made their way in nine months, it seems to me that that um needs to be changed. And I'm hoping that with the certificate of appropriate is now finished and others to follow, that they will actually make their way to city council, thank you.
What else?
Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And that is.
Very constant believing, um. I just thought it would be useful for us to go over some impacts from this storm, some lessons learned. And I had the opportunity to discuss anything that might be on your minds with regards to what it wants and how we can be better going forward. Also the opportunity for the public as well, so I thought it was appropriate to put this on the agenda tonight for us to go through, so let's further do. But first of all, uh, Helene was not exactly as any of us expected. The reality was a little different than anticipation. Uh, the winds were stronger, we were expecting sustained twenty-five to thirty with gusting to sixty, we got sustained at forty-five, gusting to seventy-five. Uh, we were expecting one to two inches, bringing that two to five inches. We were expecting flooding of some road and streets and some overflow and storm retention ponds, we did get some minor flooding of some roads and streets and a little bit of overflow from our retention pond. As far as tornado activity, that was our biggest threat going into the storm, uh, we had a potential for many tornadoes because on the side of the storm were on. Uh, but in Bitter County, we had three confirmed tornadoes, they were all EF zero, which are by any scale, uh, small tornadoes, etc. They hit your property, then they probably don't feel so smart, uh, but there was one, one with Fuzzy, one in Christianville. Following the storm, uh, Bruce and his team uh deployed and performed the damage assessment across the city. This is the result of their damage assessment, I won't go over each individual item, uh, but as you can see, uh, the majority of damage was tree damage, roofs, tree damage to other property. Uh, damage to electrical service. Damage to carports, those types of things, all because of quality issues associated with high winds. The uh, top item there uh is the downtown marina, we'll talk about that in a few minutes, I'll probably ship you into that. The news is he didn't have to get out his red tags for any properties, that's, that was very unfortunate, sorry. Just enough that we had a couple more that has come in. You got any questions, appreciate it. Public works activities, Stephen? Yes, are you going to present your presentation? On the what? Your helping me present it? Uh, public works activities, uh, constantly flooding trees, we're blocking roadways and we're cleared by public work crews. We had traffic signal callouts at all times of the day and night, uh, in various locations, portal or don't. Uh, often say of course, uh, and other locations. Uh, cleanup efforts persisted and are still persisting throughout the city and the historic week, throughout the week of September thirtieth, October fourth. And in conjunction with preparation for shutdown. These department activities, uh, they received five hundred seventy-nine calls for service in a seventy-two hour period of six forty-five PM on the twenty-sixth to September thirtieth. Uh, social media posts, we put eight on city platforms, thirteen on PD platforms, addressing traffic, vice, laid open storm assessments, public work to reschedule, dispatch lost trail. Issues and echoes of media releases that get found for our storm activities. Other storm duties that they took on included emergency management house calls, clearing free, traffic control, marking hazards. Uh, staffing mobile charging station at the county athletic force and they also fed all the city emergency essential workers when having rest reps on them. And performed health and welfare checks that needed. Our department responded to sixty-six calls for service during the period of the storm, which is two hundred and fourteen percent of the people that were. Uh, normal trouble over with our call, we were able to do the top of the day, if you had an idea, increase. Uh, they also deployed three firefighters to assist Higgins County from September thirtieth to October fourth. Administration staff and other personnel reported to station one at about one fifteen AM on Friday, it just passed, so they were ready. As far as the data damage to return, um. I have a synopsis here for you, the best description I have overall of the summary of damage from Marina. Was provided today uh to us by State Harbor, he's a adjuster and already visited. Uh, and I will just, I'll read it to you, go good, so, uh, didn't have time to print this out. So the hurricane Helene damage summary said, State Harbor, Buford Downtown Marina suffered significant damage on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. As Hurricane Helene passed to the west of the region, the storm has caused sections of the dock to become unusable. There is extensive frame checking and splitting, loose or broken deck boards and a substantial number of mooring cleats are loose or missing. Pile guides are damaged or missing in several locations, timber framing throughout the marina, which is already in poor condition. Did not withstand the swelling conditions and the steel hardware connecting these components has failed completely in some areas. Individual dock flotation units are loose or missing, utility pedestals, Wi-Fi antennas and security cameras were damaged, the sun products missing. I thought this was inappropriate and accurate description for summary of what was going on, I, I've been with Marina and watched everything that went uh, went back. Uh, and I can attest that every bit of that's true, um. So we had nine vessels that beached in the Marshall Island Bay Street, eight of them was broke free of the moorings that were in the channel and the remaining vessel was independently anchored. Uh, I'm not going to say anymore about the damage, Marina docks, the summer did a great job of, of letting you know what those were. Um, the estimated cost of repairing is still pending report from the adjuster, uh, our adjuster through the insurance reserve uh is scheduled to be here tomorrow. Uh, to take a look at that, yes, so we will also follow up with the information that we're discussing. Next slide, so these are just some pictures of the damage uh on the marina. Next slide. The berms and plates are separated. You can see where the day dock has come apart completely. Waterfront park. Quite a picture there, first, I'm being honest, I'll show the floor back for a second. So we did lose a tree, uh, we had multiple trees that affected salt intrusion. The jury is out on whether we can save those trees or not, but we're trying, uh, we're trying to irrigate those to, to save as many as we can. Uh, brick pavers were displaced in a lot of locations. We had several sink holes and that were exacerbated by the storm and almost all of the mulch was wiped. But. Some examples of the breakers placed on. There's that raft that built your backyard. Thanks. They were launched with displaced, they then were brick displaced and all of the seat. These are just a few pictures, not necessarily the worst of damage. But some operations, lessons learned, research and whatever you want to call it, um, first of all, as we talked about, the impacts were a lot greater than anticipated. I think you interviewed Ron Staphon Paul with the governor, indicated that was true for everybody across the board. So, which made it difficult and that could also hamper the initial response of utility providers, they tend to. Station their assets where they feel like they're going to be most useful after storm, where the largest impacts are going to be. And you get impacts that are different than you anticipate. It, it kind of throws that by not guilty. Uh, some of the public frustration points that we saw were, first of all, the protracted best of, the protracted restoration of power and other utilities. Or some of us are powering back on the next day, one of us out for three, four, five days. And that gets extremely frustrating, especially this time of year when the humidity is high, uh, the temperature is high and, and then tempers get high, so. It's not a great recipe. We had dark traffic signals and many times in many locations, we had an inability to clear trees because they were untangible power lines and we were dependent on the power company. To kind of take care of the power line issues so our crews could actually handle the trees. So some lessons learned, uh, I know myself, I, I was trying to ping up some degree in my yard and. Uh, every two to three minutes, my phone was going off of a phone call or a text message and, and so the lesson I learned from that is that maybe. Even if the county EOC has not stood up and they were not stood up and escaped, uh, maybe we should consider standing up, at least a skeleton municipal EOC. Uh, that way we can have centralized reporting of problem locations, we can track them consistently uh throughout the recovery process, keeping track of hazards, outages, blockages. So we hold looking at. Uh, pre-storm public communication should include how we intend to clear roads and how roads are prioritized and to let the public know that balleries may not necessarily. and to let the public know that balleries may not necessarily be before. Frustration. It's frustrating for our crews. I'm sure they can still get on that. There, there are times when they could have cleared trees, but they can't get to them because of the power lines. You had a big one in your neighborhood that took a long time to restore. So those are the, the basic lessons learned from a staff perspective, but I know you all had constituents that were probably you, and had concerns related to you, and I think that's probably something everyone of you at some point during the storm, during the aftermath. And so at this point, I'll just sort of get up and discuss them. What are the plans for Milton? Well, just, well, as you know, here on that phone call at four o'clock, Milton, I hate to say it, but I don't want Jesus. But Milton is expected to be a, a small event for here. Two to four feet water inundation, winds no greater than about 30 miles per hour. That's what's expected right now, but Milton is a wave around between category, it's, it's category, it's a category four right now. It's expected to be a category three when it makes landfall. At one point yesterday, sustained winds were 180 miles per hour. It's a very, very powerful storm. And so for my sake closely, we have a call scheduled with the county emergency management functions, and I'll continue to keep you all updated on that, but please know that while we're recovering from this storm, I know Nate and company, the police department, the fire department, all stand ready to handle it. That's, that's why we're here.
Stephen, I think you wanted a comment.
Good evening again. I'm Stephen Murray, 609 Raymond Street. I prepared some comments before I jump into those. I would say before the city jumps into opening their own EOC and duplicating efforts, we've always struggled to work with county emergency management. But Mr. Mayor, you do sit on the policy committee with the other mayors and other leadership in the community. And so from time to time, we would have to engage the other members of the policy committee to make sure that EOC was activated and communicated effectively with all the members. And so I hope, hope you're doing that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here tonight to share a few of my thoughts on the city's preparation and recovery efforts for tropical storm Helene. I personally helped cut trees off of Pigeon Point Road, off of Augusta, several friends and family houses, while running generators and fuel to help neighbors in need. And I just returned home yesterday after five days in western North Carolina, where I'm very proud of our community for raising almost 100 pallets of supplies that we deliver to an area that's faced devastation unlike anything I have ever seen or most of us have ever seen. So hurricane preparation and hurricane recovery are very fresh on my mind. And so, Mr. Mayor, I reached out to you privately several days after the storm to share my concerns, and your response was, this storm caught everyone by surprise, while also dismissing my concerns and blaming Dominion Energy. So I figured I'd share these thoughts publicly if we already have another named storm within striking distance. How were you surprised when three days out, it was forecasted by the National Hurricane Center to bring sustained tropical storm force winds to our area? How were you surprised when the city, on their own social media channels, released warnings about tropical storm force winds several days before the storm? While the track shifted some, the majority of the spaghetti models, meteorologists, and the National Hurricane Center predicted tropical storm impacts to our fair city. Regardless, storms are unpredictable. We learned this in 1989, when Hurricane Hugo forecasted to directly hit Savannah, Beaufort area, shipped in north at the last minute, and decimated Charleston and McAllen though. Mr. Mayor, I think a more appropriate word instead of surprised would be complacent. Mayors across the region prepared their cities for forecasted weather. Mayor Zed Smathers of Canton, North Carolina, shared messages on social media telling his folks to prepare. He requested city staff move assets from floodplowed areas and take steps to ready public assets for the worst. And while Canton suffered massive damage due to flooding, they weren't surprised. I implore you to heed the warnings of the National Hurricane Center in the future and work with our regional partners to clearly communicate and prepare us for these storms. We were lucky to not have any fatalities during this storm, but your complacency very well could, very well could kill someone next time. While we're talking about surprises, Mr. Mayor, I have to say that I was surprised we didn't hear anything from you before, during, or after this storm event that littered our town with debris, left thousands without power, and closed roads on any of the city's communication channels, except for one scripted video on your campaign page, two days after the storm. You were nowhere to be found. Our citizens deserve to hear from their mayor during times of crisis, and I implore you to develop a communications plan moving forward. As you know, the storm knocked out power to stoplights across the city, causing them to be inoperational. The lights at Rebel Road and First Boulevard and Carteret Street and Craven Street were down for almost four days. State law requires these lights to be treated as four-way stops. However, a majority of our motorists aren't aware of this requirement, so they blast through these intersections believing they have the right of way. Our family was involved in almost in several collisions trying to access Carteret Street. I watched many of my neighbors experience the same. I can appreciate City PD and the administration posting a couple of notices about the four-way stop requirement on their social media channels. But keep in mind, a lot of folks didn't have power and didn't have access to social media. And keep in mind, a large percentage of our population is not on social media. I realize it's probably impractical to have an officer stationed at stoplights to direct traffic 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But I believe some simple signage that's saying this should be treated as a four-way stop with a few cones would go a long way toward educating the public and making these dark intersections safer for all involved. My last concern that I'd like to share with you is the seemingly lack of prioritization of life safety issues versus aesthetic cleanup during storm recovery. I'm told that, Mr. Mayor, you were more concerned about cleaning your neighborhood and getting the city ready for shrimp festival than you were about ensuring life safety priorities were being accomplished first. An example, I'm told the city public works crews cleaned the unobstructed but debris strewn roads of a gated private neighborhood on Friday after the storm. Meanwhile, hazardous tree limbs hung precariously over Craven Street with no barricades, while kids rode their bikes under it, and trees completely blocked roadways in Mossy Oaks and Pigeon Point until late Sunday afternoon, a full three days after the storm. Aesthetics are important, but the health and life safety of our residents and guests should be your number one priority. While I and others are extremely proud of the men and women of our police department, of our fire department, of our public works, and the folks who work tirelessly to help us recover from the storms, my frustration is with your lack of leadership who failed to advocate strongly for the city with our partners like Dominion Energy, who failed to communicate with your residents, and who failed to ensure life safety priorities were met first. You can and should do better. Thank you.
In response to that, Stephen, I was on the phone with the governor. I spoke with the city manager and with Blakely the whole time during the those three days, and with my wife while driving around looking at the destruction and trying to get help, get this power back on for everybody. Sorry. You didn't think I had the, that I didn't care about the community. That's not true. So with that, any other questions?
I've got a question. I've been hearing this a lot from citizens. Is there any idea on how long those boats are gonna be along the bay? Is there a plan for the owners to get them, or what's going on?
So the answer is I don't know exactly how long they will be there, Councilman Lipsitz, but first of all, the owners have to contact their insurance companies, their insurance companies have to authorize the removal. I'm told one of the best opportunities for removal this month will be the 16th through the 18th, when we have some King, very King High Tides. And so I'd imagine a few of them will be taken off the, the, the shore at that time. The good news is, we know who all the owners of are these, we know the owners of these boats, and so abandoned vessels. And I think that we're gonna have pretty quick action in getting them removed. And if we don't, we, we have proper recourse. We can address it.
Okay, I've just been having a lot of calls about it, and I just wanted to see if I could get something for them. Thank you.
Yes, Rob. Hey, oh, I'm sorry. Were we able to discuss, just real quick so that we can then open it up for public comment?
Sure.
But I just clarification on the public works activity. Traffic signal callouts on locations. So I see Bluffton and City of Beaufort on Saturday from 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Saturday, 12:30, Bluffton. Sunday, 1:20 to 4:30, Bluffton. Are those callouts just providing the location, or is that actually where our public works were working? And if so, just could we elaborate a little bit on why we would have our resources in Bluffton and not here?
Sure.
Go ahead. Uh, Councilman, so we share an all-call service with Beaufort County. So every week, one member does after-hours, so we do the entire county. So during the storm, the weekend that the storm came through, I was on call. And so I responded to all those locations for twisted heads, the traffic signals not cycling correctly, and power outages. And so what it is, is we do two weeks out of the month, Beaufort County does two weeks out of the month, and it just kind of helps us because we both have very small traffic division. So we, we partner with each other to help each other out. So they, when they're on call, they respond to our signals, and when we're on call, we respond to theirs.
And, and that's still standard practice for a storm? I mean, I guess I can understand that for normal operations. I just don't know that I can understand that when we have our own issues here, when we only have one member on call. I mean, we could have grossly benefited from your expertise on some of the outages that we had. And I, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but if I'm looking at this, and we have an agreement with Bluffton to help them, and we only have one person on call, and you're there, that means you're not here.
So during the storm activities, they, we, we don't deal with each other's traffic signals, but then as the day, the next days come on, it just depends what, what comes out and what goes on. If it's a, if it's something that's super damaging, then we would not respond. Beaufort County would respond to it. We just do, we just share an on-call for some of the smaller traffic signal stuff that happens. And a lot of it was the signals coming back online. And when they come back online, they should reset themselves, but sometimes they have issues. And so we have to go out there and physically reset the conflict monitor.
Okay. And so. And I want to take a look at that, and I just want to make sure that we're, and maybe we're not. I just want to make sure that we're taking care of the city of Beaufort first.
We use all of our signals as well.
Okay, because we were out, there were several signals that were out for quite a while. So.
And the signals that were out.
What's that?
They were sort of like working signals that were twisted by the wind or knocked out. They didn't have power.
So Craven, First Boulevard, Main Point, were all due to power. And so until Dominion can restore power back to that signal, we have no capability of getting those signals back operational. So what was happening sporadically throughout the county was as Dominion was restoring power, those signals were coming back up online. And a lot of people didn't realize there was twisted heads, or there was other things because the power was out. And then once it started coming up, the traffic management was calling us, letting us know, hey, you have a backwards head on 278 and Simmsville Road, or wherever, wherever we were getting called out to. And then some of them were coming back online, and then they go into flash, even though they're supposed to reset themselves. Some of them have older cabinets, older style components that don't reset themselves, and it takes that manual reset to go out there.
Right, gotcha.
And none of my.
So just, just taking this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
None of our crews were affected, or that, that was all after-hours work.
Okay. After-hours being what?
After 5:00 PM.
That's after-hours is still the same even at during a storm?
So during the storm, Beaufort County was, was managing theirs. We were only going out on call after-hours. So I only went out after public work shut down. So if we worked 7:00 to 7:00, I wasn't going to Bluffton at, at 3:00 in the afternoon, Beaufort County was.
They have a technical dedicated Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 11:00. And then we perform call-out services on our rotating schedule, like presuming we have an agreement with the county, and we'll run the DOT X way. And, and we provide on-call support, and that's, that's, I think that's at least on that.
Okay. All right, well, maybe that's something that we talk about a little bit more. Because I, I do know that even without talking about traffic signals, there were several hazards that you took several days to get around to, and maybe that's just because we need to, you know, have a more organized response. And even if that's sending a, a crew out to take things off and make sure, you know, there was, there was downed power lines in a tree right next to the Spanish Marsh Trail. And, and actually, it wasn't me that thought about it. It was somebody that called me and said, hey, we're, kids are out of school. They're gonna be potentially on the trail. At least let's set this up, maybe tape it off, put a cone out. And so I think us being better organized to at least address those issues that won't take much time, but could prove important, would be, would be beneficial. And I did, didn't, maybe this is for mayor or for Mike. Did the city have a municipal EOC after Matthew? I thought there was something that was.
We have, we have a cooperation with the county.
Right, a cooperation with the county, but was there not a municipal EOC that was established separate from the agreement with the county after Matthew?
We have an. We have in our operating procedures, the capability to stand up a municipal.
But it was never stood up.
Not for this one. And that was one of the, well, I don't know about Matthew. I wasn't in the city that.
I wasn't either. I was just trying to find out if there was any time, and it looked like there was a time after Matthew.
We were in the emergency operations center at the county.
At the.
The city of Beaufort was.
But, but did the city of Beaufort not have something set up at the police station after Matthew? Okay, so.
We were part of the, I mean, we, everything was operated out of the EOC, everything could get there. It was following that that we set up procedures for emergency operations post- hurricane.
Okay.
Matthew sort of generated that.
Right, and I, that's kind of where I'm surprised at, the fact that we didn't have a, a plan for, for this storm. I'm, I'm, I know there's probably public comment, and I don't want to take up too much time, but I do think that this is just incredibly important. If there was any communications in regards to EOC or a plan, I didn't know about that. I didn't know about it. So if there's a, if there's a EOC county management committee, I don't know if you had conversations with them, other mayors or the chair.
They called us.
If that happened, I, I didn't.
They called, they called the mayor, they called the city manager and all that, and the last thing we heard from it was that was that this was gonna be a rain event with some gusts up to 30 miles an hour, and that was it. So it wasn't gonna be anything big. So they didn't even man their own, I don't think, at the county.
And it showed. It showed.
A lot of it. That's one of my recommendations looking back is even if they don't, maybe you should.
Absolutely.
So that's.
This was a sucker. You know.
If I could, Mayor, if I could just for a moment, address the issue of the allegation that the islands of Beaufort were cleared before public street. I spoke with Nate.
Excuse me, Scott, can you speak up? This is probably important.
I can, Dan. Would you like to come closer?
Oh, I've got it tuned up as much as I can.
Okay. I'll speak louder for you then.
That's good.
You got me thrown off my game here.
Sorry.
Yeah, it was Beaufort, yes. So I spoke with Nate, and what happened was there was a tree that fell that was blocking the road. It was not encumbered in wires. It was a temple cut, pushed to the side, opened up the road. That's what they did. I, I am not gonna instruct Nate to not do that just because we have a tree entangled on a power line somewhere else in town. It's, to me, that makes no sense. They employ the resources where they can, they can have the most, they're blocking at the moment and attack the safety. They need to attack. Safety reasons and prioritization. So, so that's what they did. They didn't clear the roads or the islands of Beaufort. They removed a tree that was blocking traffic, which is necessary if we want to have the registered response vehicles, EMS, et cetera, that need to get through there. They can't do that if there's a tree in the way.
And they don't want cutting anything on the power lines. That was another tree comment, right?
No, so we, if it's entangled in power cable lines, we can't touch it. Because it's, the utilities come, they remove it out, and then like, well, when it's Spanish point, once they removed it down, we came in and cut it up, and moved it after they took it out of the power line. So a lot of it is, you know, you think, oh, this tree fell, and we're not doing anything. But even if it's on the ground and there's power lines in it, we can't touch it until Dominion comes and removes those power lines from that tree. Because you never know, you know, if they're gonna send some voltage down those lines at any time. We have no way of knowing. So, you know, we, to protect my guys and what they do, I would never let them go and touch anything that's in power lines or cable lines or anything. And so you have some opportunity with newer neighborhoods with, you know, I was Beaufort Battery Shores, that the cable and power lines are all underground. So those trees are gonna probably get cleared first if they're not entangled in anything, and then we'll move around. But I can tell you that at every point. But I can tell you that at every point, once we went out from the storm, there was guys in every neighborhood in every part of the city. And we have twenty guys and we broke up into two-man teams and we worked twelve, fourteen-hour days to make sure that we got the roads cleared for the city. And I will take into effect and note that we can do a little better with coning off and taping off some of the hazards. But while we were out there, it was nonstop trying to clear roadways and get the roads open for emergency vehicles.
And I'll say too, I mean, if I, if there's anything that I can do to help in those situations, feel free to tag me in. I was going around my neighborhood and throughout the city to try to identify needs. As I'm sure everybody else was as well. But I would also like to see us have a different alternative to communicate with. So I know we put the social media stuff out, but as was pointed out by Stephen, a lot of people don't use social media. But I was thinking about it when I was reading the packet and saw that we had notifications and thought just the same thing. I saw several people make comments about the fact that after they got power, it was the first time they checked their social media in a couple of days. And so maybe having some kind of rendezvous point to where people know that they can get their, identify needs across to the city and get help if necessary is probably going to prove valuable. I don't know of a good reason for why we didn't have any of the schools operating in that capacity or any of the government buildings operating as a, as a central hub for, for resources. We can do that. And if we can't, or if we're not, then what's the justifiable reason for, for not utilizing those resources to help in a, in a situation like this?
One earlier, that's where the county EOC kicks in and those efforts are coordinated. Those facilities are open. They communicate that with the schools. That, I think that was a big missing link in the story. I tried to pass the buck, but I think that was a big missed client. Rob, did you have something you want to say?
Thank you. Thank you. The question has to do with the marina and money. And given the fact that they leased with Safe Harbor as Nolan Boyd, who pays for the damages and who pays for reparation?
Insurance, right.
Insurance.
Who's insurance?
Our city has to.
Reality is our property. Safe Harbor doesn't have any?
They don't own it. So they don't know their, they can insure their operations. They can't insure our property.
Yeah. I mean, I think it was an interesting, again, Graham Trask, 1211 Baster. I think it was an interesting, interesting comments from Stephen, who appears that this meeting was taken over for politicking with only a month to go. Perhaps, Scott, you can follow up with Stephen to get all his input that he went on about today. Islands of Beaufort, is there any city council member who lives in the islands of Beaufort?
Yes.
Who's that?
That's.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Anything to do with that?
I didn't say that. I was just wondering.
No, of course you didn't. Thank you. Bring it up. I will say on record, I was all over the city. I didn't post, I don't post to social media. I don't even have a Facebook account anymore. But it wasn't a corner I turned that I did not see public works or one of the county and city fire departments and first responders helping locations, areas, moving. I mean, I won't hear that we felt on the sword from the standpoint of responding as quickly as we could. I think we failed to recognize the severity of the storm. And we should have set up, set up our own emergency operations per our procedure. But we have always partnered with the county in a larger storm and this was not expected to be that kind of storm. Or the county would have set up their own EOC and we would have been partnered with them on that. But everywhere I went, everywhere that, that I had calls from people in my neighborhood and otherwise trying to help them keep generation going, their refrigerators or their oxygen machines, there were immediate responses to helping the, our staff and the fire department and the police department help against the necessary items to those people in the, so. I, you know, refute that criticism on a standpoint that our staff did not respond to it. We can discuss the realities of whether or not we should have stood up our own EOC and whether that will be a standard operation procedures moving forward for what was a tropical storm event as compared to a major hurricane.
I guess I just have to wonder why, after it hit us the way that it did, I never saw any kind of EOC setup. And sure, if the position that the county would take, which if, if we have a seat at that table, then it's on us too. But if, if the position that we're taking is that it caught us off guard, then why at any point afterward did we not stand up an EOC? Not the municipality per se, but at the county level, it seems like it just kind of dragged on and we worked our way through it. But there was never any organized effort to put an EOC together that I saw. Maybe I missed it, but even when I called, I called you the day after or maybe two days after, that really wasn't a conversation. And so I guess I just have to wonder why it wasn't fine. It catches you off guard. You know you have a plan for when you're expecting the event. So why didn't we go ahead and deploy and implement that plan on Friday when we woke up? And it's all the aftermath.
Colonel Baxter can answer that.
And should have to. I mean, if there was, if there was a plan or there would have been a plan, if it hit us at, you know, category three, then why, why wasn't that implemented immediately after it did hit us?
Anyone else? We have a meeting at seven o'clock, so if not, I'll go ahead and turn so we can go upstairs. All right, we.